Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the March 26, 2024 Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Meeting. It is scheduled from 9:00 to 10:30. We have myself present in the boardroom along with Commissioners Mejia, Klaus, and Edwards on Zoom. We will start the meeting off with a review of Board of County Commissioners' draft agenda. So we have draft agenda for the April 2nd meeting. Standard beginning. We will have pleasures of allegiance led by Commissioner Mejia. And then for presentations, we have a proclamation for Volunteer Appreciation Month. The Board of County Commissioners will proclaim April 2024 as Volunteer Appreciation Month in Thurston County. Public Health and Social Services Proclamation for Child Abuse Awareness Month. Board of County Commissioners will proclaim the month of April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Thurston County.
Commissioner, Gretchen is online. I don't know if there's any specific details that you'd like to share with the board? About, so do we have folks coming in? How, what's that going to look like on Tuesday?
Yes, thank you. Good morning Commissioners. My name is Gretchen Toller, Division Director at Community Health over in Public Health and Social Services. And on Tuesday for proclamation of child abuse prevention, we will have we'll have some staff from Monarch Children's Advocacy Center. And they're going to bring their, one of their therapy dogs with them as well. And then we're also going to have Dr. Joyce Gilbert from the Providence Abuse Intervention Center, Shelley Willis from Family Education Support Services, and then an advocate from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. And I've asked each, each group to limit their time to like two minutes. So hoping they'll take eight to 10 minutes tops. And I won't say much, just, just introduce them.
Thank you, Ms. Toller. Look forward to that. After presentations, that will of course be followed by opportunity.
Vice Chair?
Comment? Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you. Just really quick, since there is two proclamations next week. We usually have the vice chair reading, but I'm not sure since there are two next week. If you want to have another commissioner read one, and then you read the other.
Are you volunteering?
No.
Would you like to read, Commissioner Mejia?
It's just, just a suggestion in case someone else wanted to volunteer.
Okay. After public comment, county manager's update.
I have none this afternoon.
Okay. Your consent items A through E. I'll just-
Wait, isn't that, uh, sorry. Isn't that Leonard's first B O C C meeting?
It will be, it'll be April 2nd, yeah.
Thank you for reminding us of that. Yes, so during the county managers, would you like to introduce Leonard? Leonard will be leaving the meeting, I imagine. I mean, yes.
I think that would be good to introduce.
He's on the job, I want a full dissertation.
You bet. He'll be ready.
That's a good point, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'll make sure to have introduction ready.
Consent items A through E. First item is auditor. Accessible Communities Advisory Committee Letter of Assurance.
Yes, so I'm not sure what this item is. I am looking it up, but we have Emmett in the room.
Emmett is here?
Yep.
So when the county established the ACAC a couple of years ago, this was part of the process. It was a letter to the Governor's Office on Accessibility to, to assure that we were moving from what has previously been a back to an ACAC. This is simply the same letter. Two years later, they require you to send it every couple of years just to assure that you still have an ACAC. The ACAC is active, who the members are.
So the board's required to do this every few years?
Yeah, it's essentially the same letter, but this one has a list of members on it.
Are there any questions for Mr. O'Connell? Thank you. Next item, Lake Management District Standard Operating Procedures.
Commissioners, if you recall, last week, last Wednesday, the board received a briefing from the leadership of the Lake Management District Steering Committees. All the efforts that they put into the past several months of creating the standard operating procedures. And they are ready for the board's acceptance and approval.
I don't see any hands. Okay, moving along. Community Planning, Economic Development. Looking to set a public hearing for fair board reappointment and fairground fees.
So Jeremy's here to tell you about this one.
Good morning Commissioners. Jeremy Davis, Operations Manager with Community Planning and Economic Development. We had an opportunity to brief the Board of County Commissioners a few weeks ago on a specific item. And the item is to amend the Thurston County Code to reapportion the fair board to accommodate the new five-member Board of County Commissioners. And then also to amend the fee section for the fairground and event center to remove some specific fees that are in the code. And then put in language to authorize the county manager to actually set those fees so that we can change them on an as-needed basis over time without having to go to a public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners. And we have, of course, sent that to the Prosecuting Attorney's Office already. These specific amendments discussed in the ordinance would maintain a 16-member fair board. We'd maintain the current fair board membership. We would just reapportion them out again to the different five county commissioner districts. We would also standardize all fair board terms from a scattered two- and four-year term to all four-year terms. Add an ex officio member. Reset the fair board member terms to conform to current county code, which calls for them to expire at the end of August and begin on September 1st of the calendar year. And we did have a chance to, to go and visit with the fair board on March 7th and discuss the potential changes with them. We didn't receive any specific feedback on potential changes to the code. They sounded like they were good to go. I think they were also happy with the addition of the ex officio member. That new member on the fair board allows us to accommodate those folks that have kids who participate in our 4H program through a Thurston County Schools District, like the Elm Schools, who may live just on the other side of Pierce, in Pierce County. So it allows them to participate on our fair board and our fair, and of course, volunteer their time to help the citizens and residents of Thurston County with the fair and setting it up and so on. And I'd be happy to take any questions if the board may have them at this time.
This also removes the fees.
Yes, it does. It removes the fees and then authorizes the county manager to set fees for the fairground and event center.
Are there any questions for Mr. Davis?
No questions.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'll follow up.
Sure, absolutely.
Next item, D, Auditor Voucher List.
These, these are the, simply the voucher lists that the board approves every week of the expenditures made by the county.
Item E, again, the voucher list. That is it for the consent calendar. Department items. First item is Central Services. It is a contract award for PHSS furniture fixtures and equipment.
So this item is for furniture for the Public Health Building, Lilly Road, to accommodate new staff that the board authorized during the budget process. And how will this be paid?
So this will be paid through the workforce development, COVID-19 specific, similar to a grant, the funding that came from the State Department of Health through the consolidated contract.
Follow-up with you on that. Commissioner Edwards, did you have a question?
I think he's just unmuted.
Well, I, the only question I had on that was if there was a, I know we're talking about bid stuff, so did we get that right?
Yes.
This was through a state contract on a piggyback, so those contracts are appropriately bid.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you. Next item under Commissioners, Resolution for Appointment to Scott Lake Drainage District Number 11. Mr. Gelder?
Certainly. Good morning Commissioners. There was a vacancy. There was a timing issue that kind of created a vacancy on the Scott Lake Drainage District Number 11. And so this is a, under authority of the Board of County Commissioners to make an appointment for this individual to fill the vacancy until such time that the next special election can occur to actually duly elect the individual to fill the seat. And so Darren Bodis has been serving in this capacity up until the vacancy time. And both of the other two drainage district commissioners do support that appointment for the vacancy.
Drainage District. I haven't heard that one yet. So there's lake districts, there's ditch districts, there's drainage districts. What else?
Well, drainage-
Just wait.
Ditch Drainage District.
Drainage District. Yes, it's the same thing.
It is the same.
Fascinating.
Commissioner Mejia?
I was just telling Wayne, just wait.
There's more.
So many districts.
All right. Public Health and Social Services.
Commissioner Edwards.
Commissioner Edwards.
By any chance, there are, I guess we're following an RCW, but on that issue, I thought if there was two sitting commissioners and they needed to fill a third position, that they made that appointment. And I'm just wondering if this is something unusual or the attorney could advise or-
Yes, we, we sent, we received the letter from the ditch district. The Board of County Commissioners must appoint for a vacancy. We did receive legal advice before we put this on your agenda. And they've told us that this is the way it needs to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further questions on drainage? All right. Public Health, Social Services, in our local agreement with Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Services, Organization for Treatment Sales Tax Funds.
So this item, the board every year appropriates a certain amount of your treatment sales tax to go to the purchase of behavioral health services from the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization, which we usually refer to as the BHASO. So this is the normal annual contract, and Shaylin can tell you more about it.
Thanks, Robin. So programs funded through this agreement serve both youth and adults with behavioral health needs and are delivered in a variety of settings, including schools, the Juvenile Detention Facility, the Thurston County Correctional Facility, community-based treatment facilities, and programs serving individuals experiencing homelessness. The agreement details program expectations, deliverables, performance measures, and compensation. There hasn't been too major differences between previous years. The amount that the board approved was approximately 3.75 million for their budget development in both 2024 and 2025. So the total compensation for this agreement is about 7.5 million across the two years. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have at this time.
Does the board have any questions for Shaylin?
No questions, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, Contract Award for Lake Management District Submerged Aquatic Vegetation Control.
This item is for environmental health to issue a contract for aquatic vegetation control. The vendor they have selected is AquaTech. And this is to provide services on a fee-for-service basis as outlined in the REIT schedule. And we've got Stuart here who can tell you more about the process.
Good morning Commissioners. Yes, so this is requesting you to award the contract for the aquatic, submerged aquatic weed management for the local, for our Lake Management Districts to AquaTechnics, LLC of Centralete, Washington. They were the successful bidder of the RFP that, that we, that we did, that you approved earlier. The, each LMD voted or reviewed these proposals independently. And then we all met as a group, and the consensus was that AquaTechnics had the best, the best proposal to move forward. And they are familiar to us as we've contracted, we currently contract with them on another, for services. So just requesting that you guys support this. And if so, then we'll start negotiating a contract with AquaTechnics for these services.
Thank you, Stuart. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Whitford? All right. Thank you. Next item, Amendment Number 19 to the Wash State Department of Health, 2022 to 2024 Consolidated Contract. So we have-
Yeah, so this item, as you know, the county has a contract with the Washington State Department of Health. It is a consolidated contract, and it's called consolidated because it covers many services provided by our Public Health and Social Services Department. All items paid for by the State Department of Health come under this contract. This particular amendment, so by the way, you see many amendments to what is referred to as the CONCON. And this particular amendment adds statements of work for the beach program and the, not sure what this acronym stands for, the ELC response. So what I'd like to emphasize though, that this additional $30,000 is specifically for these programs. It is not funds that the board could choose to allocate to something else. And I see Mark on the screen. Mark, are you here to speak to this amendment?
No, he hasn't kind of carried on the message.
No, no, I'm sorry, Robin. If you're speaking to me, I'm here for the public comment.
Okay, then I don't, I don't know, Vicki or you, you can't speak to this either. So I don't see anyone here who can speak to this particular contract. So Commissioners, I will try to answer your questions as best I can. And we can follow up before this comes before you for a vote.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll keep moving. Next is Public Works. Item A, 7A, Request for Proposals for Transportation Safety Plan.
Yeah, we see Matt walking just right off time. We're always being here. So this item is to issue a request for proposals for a consultant that would assist with preparation of the Transportation Safety Action Plan. And Becky can tell you more about that.
So in 2023, Public Works applied for and received $264,000 in a planning grant from the Safe Streets and Roads for All Discretionary Grant Program, which is part of the federal bipartisan, bipartisan infrastructure law. And this money will go towards updating our current local road safety plan to make it applicable for future funding through the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program for implementation money to actually do a project on the roads. So this update would include updating all the data that goes into the plan and then incorporating more public engagement in the process, developing, developing an equity analysis and including some data analysis and templates for periodic updates and reporting in the future. And this is all requirements that will allow us to call it an action plan for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program. That I'd be happy to answer your question.
Commissioners, if you have any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
I'll, I'll add something. So this plan is actually going to allow us to leverage. This plan allows us to leverage for much larger projects. So this plan is going to develop a project list that is going to be eligible for, that'll create a list of projects that will be eligible for us to apply for in the future. So I think there's a lot of good things that come out of this plan.
Excellent. All right, Item 7B, reimbursable agreement for state materials, lab engineering, and/or testing services.
So falling under the banner of I learn something new every day. Apparently, when the roadwork is done, there are certain things that need to go to labs for testing. This item is to enter into an agreement with the state materials, lab engineering, and testing services in support of the roadwork. And I'm sure Matt can tell us a lot more about what that testing entails.
So this is, don't feel bad. This is a very unique item. So this is unique to chip seal projects. So the next item that I'm going to talk about today is calling for bids for our chip seal program. And so what this, this testing is very unique in that it has to be performed by a certified, somebody who's certified and actually taking oil samples. We on Public Works don't have anybody that's certified to do that, nor do many materials labs. It's so, because it's so specific. So we reached out to the state. Typically, when we're looking for support, we'll use private testing firms. But none of those firms could perform this service, so we reached out to the DOT lab. And the term of disagreement is for 10 years. Typically, we do a chip seal project every other year. So hopefully for the next five years, we have somebody to take those oil samples and make sure that the chip seal is going to perform as it should. Just thinnered out on you a little bit. So the kind of the testing that they're doing is they want to make sure that the oil's not too soft, not too firm, because they want to make sure that aggregate that we sprinkle on top of the oil is actually going to embed itself within the oil mat. So they, they do a viscosity test and a bunch of other tests that I can't even pronounce. So it's a very, we're very fortunate that the DOT agreed to step up and help us out on this.
Very cool. Are there any questions for Matt?
Sounds like a Goldilocks text.
All right, thank you. Next item, C, Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids for 2024 Chip Seal Project CP Number 98024.
So I'm going to just turn this one right over to Matt to tell you about.
No problem. So as we discussed in the state of the transportation system earlier, we're always trying to do chip seal projects to get out in front of the road conditions, the pavement conditions deteriorating so much that we have to do an overlay. And that's because we can do chip seal for a much, a much less cost per mile than a full asphalt overlay. So this contract is, we actually have 65 miles of chip seal. So it's a significant amount of chip seal work to be performed. All the work is being performed in the southwest portion of the county. So we go all the way from Grand Mound area all the way up to south of Maytown area. The estimated cost is somewhere between four and five million dollars. And with that, I can take any questions.
I'm not seeing any hands. Are there any questions regarding the chip sealing? All right, thank you, Matt.
Only, only other thing I would add is you can almost set your clock by it because this takes good weather work. So it's typically the first week after 4th of July. That's when the, that's when the chip seal will begin, so.
All right. Item D, Resolution for Temporary Closure of Waddell Creek Road, southwest from 90th Lane southwest to 86th Lane southwest.
So recently, the board had a briefing by Public Works staff letting you know that there would be upcoming requests for road closures related to road projects and that those need to be approved by the board. So here's the first one of those coming before you.
Yes, well said. So this is the first of four. As you know, last, yeah, last week in our works- in our work session, we discussed the upcoming closures on Waddle Creek Road, Black Lake, for the Black Lake Bridge Approach project, Noshka, the Green Cove culvert replacement project, and there's an upcoming closure on Little Rock Road. So this project, we're going out in advance of the chip seal contract. So Waddle Creek Road has three culverts that are considered deep. By deep, I mean there, there's ten feet or more fill above them. So it's a significant effort to dig down and replace these culverts. So we're going to use our small works roster and hire a contractor to replace these three culverts. We're expecting that, that work is going to take up to four weeks. During that time, a portion of Waddle Creek Road will need to be closed. Traffic will need to use a detour that will be set up in place. The detour is fourteen miles if you go all the way around in a circle. So we're hoping to get out in front, communicate exactly where that closure is to the public so they're not going all the way around and then have to come back all the way around. They can just go to the appropriate side to begin with to avoid that four, that full fourteen mile detour. Yeah. I guess with that, take any questions?
Are there any questions for Matt? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
County manager.
So this is your regular items where commissioners, item eight A is where commissioners report on the boards and committees that they had attended in the last two weeks. Item eight B is where the county manager reads the schedule for the upcoming week. And I would change that to two weeks. And then the board will adjourn and move to the public hearing.
All right. Public hearing. That's what Mark is with us for. So at three thirty on that date, we have a public hearing scheduled for Public Health and Social Services regarding ordinance amending code section two point one one, two point zero three zero to expand the Veterans Advisory Board membership.
Yes, this item changes Thurston County Code to expand the membership of the Veterans Advisory Board. And this is in response to the expansion of the Board of County Commissioners. And Mark can tell you more about the proposal.
Yes, good morning, Commissioner Mark Moffitt, Public Health and Social Services. So in addition to expansion of the Board of County Commissioners to match that, the Veterans Advisory Board also wants to increase subcommittee work and the, the goals that they can work on. For the public comment, the Veterans Advisory Board Chair will be in attendance with me in case there, there are any questions from the public.
All right. Did you have a comment? Just to say this is a one-word change.
A one-word change. All right. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Seeing nothing?
No, just a, I guess a quick question for Mark. You know, are we going to have the Veterans Advisory Board members come in that? Is that public hearing?
Yes, Commissioner Mejia, right now only the chair will be in attendance with me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
All right, thank you, Mark. That concludes the April second agenda, draft agenda. Item two on today's agenda is proclamations and awards. So for the month, oh, go ahead.
Good morning. The Volunteer Appreciation Month and Child Abuse Awareness Month proclamations are included in your packet. Public Health has coordinated attendance for the Child Abuse Awareness Month proclamation. For Volunteer Appreciation Month, the board last week wanted to circle back on who to invite and accept the proclamation. The proclamation, as currently written, does reference boards and commissions. My suggestion is to invite all members of all Thurston County Boards and Commissions. I think it would be greatly valued and further recognition of them is overdue. If this is the direction you'd like to go, we can get the invite out today.
All right, we have, we received some information from our board clerk. Is there any comments from the commission regarding who they would like to see invited to the volunteer appreciation proclamation moment?
I think inviting our members from the boards and commission, I think will be highly valued as well. I don't think we've ever really recognized them. And so just having this moment to do it, I think will be, will be good.
Okay. Commissioners Edwards or Klaus? Commissioner Edwards?
Okay. I, I guess I would just say I don't, we might not have enough room in the meeting room to have everybody show up. But at least they all, they, all of the groups should get an invite. I guess that would be the best way I could put it. And then at least they won't feel left out. Thank you.
And maybe a copy of the proclamation at their meetings for those that don't able to attend? Commissioner Klaus, any feedback?
No, I don't have anything to add, but I do think that's a good idea to give them a copy if they're not able to attend. Otherwise, I just agree with what I've heard from others.
Okay, so we'll send an invite to everyone and a copy of the proclamation to everyone.
Thank you.
Is there any, anything else? All right. And then the other proclamations already planned out?
So, so if I may, with two proclamations on your agenda next week and a public meeting at three thirty, you may want to have staff who are responsible for those sections of the agenda work with the people coming in so that it does not go terribly long.
To like hurt people or is that what you're saying? Kind of manage?
Yes, manage logistics, think about how many people you want to ask speak. Because the reason that we generally only have one proclamation is to manage the time of the meeting. So I'm just suggesting that we pay attention to the amount of time that each of these could take. Because both of them sound like a large number of people coming in.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please.
So I think ask people, we know who's coming, maybe just doing kind of a recognition of the members or like the group that's in, like if it's from the agriculture advisory group or the agri tourism group, like just recognizing that. But I think maybe just doing it that way instead of having people speak and then highlighting kind of all of our boards and commissions and, instead of just having each group come up and, and do a whole thing, because we have so many boards and commissions that, yes, it will take a while. And we do have another proclamation right after that, too.
Exactly. So yeah, either that or clearly limit the amount of time each speaker has. Because we've seen speakers that come in with PowerPoint decks.
And there's twenty-five potential groups and
Yeah.
Five people in each group.
Exactly. So I, I just want to be mindful of the time.
So how do you, how, I mean, you suggested that we have staff that are assigned to managing?
Well, each proclamation does have a person assigned, although I see the first one's assigned to me. I will be managing my group and we will work with Gretchen to let her know that not everybody will get to speak. And those who do speak are limited to just, let's say, two, two or three minutes with only a maximum of two or three speakers.
And she already alluded to those invitations that she's extended and the expectation for the duration of time. So she's, she's on that already.
They get super long. So I'll work with Amy for the volunteer group so we can keep that. But I do appreciate Commissioner Mejia, if, if what we want to do is just recognize everyone in the room rather than have them speak, that's a good plan.
Okay. Anything further? All right. Thank you. Next item is, advisory boards and commissions?
First, for applications, we've received the Board of Equalization's recommendation to reappoint Diane Pust as a regular member. If reappointed, her new term would expire in two thousand and twenty-seven. Her application was considered along with those included over the last few weeks.
Okay. Was everybody able to hear that? Are there any questions?
I really wasn't.
What's that?
Amy, I'm sorry, can you repeat it?
Yes, Ruth Elder, clerk of the Board of Equalization, has shared the Board of Equalization's recommendation to reappoint Diane Pust as a regular member to the BOE. If reappointed, her new term would expire in two thousand and twenty-seven.
So we have one recommendation from the Board of Equalization to reappoint Diane Pust. Okay. Are there any questions or items regarding citizens advisory boards and commissions while we're on it?
I recommend moving forward with the recommendation.
Put it on consent pretty early.
Okay.
That's if there's an agreement with the board.
I'm, I'm good with that.
It looks like we've kind of narrowed, you know, kind of winnowed down the amount of vacancies quite a bit, don't you think?
Comes and goes.
Okay.
There's one other.
Do you want to work with the City of Rainier on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee?
I will ask.
That's been a long time, one that's been vacant. So if you could get someone.
Did you have something to add, Amy?
Yes, if there is, for the BOE reappointment to move forward, we'll include that next week's agenda. And then lastly, an additional member has resigned from the racial equity council. So a total of three in the last couple of weeks. And last week I mentioned scheduling a briefing with DV to provide updates on the council. And that is scheduled for next week, Wednesday, April third, during the afternoon work session.
So do we have three or four?
There are three resignations.
Three have resigned so far. And is that going to be an executive session since we're going to be talking about?
There's no reason I'm aware of that would make that eligible for executive session.
Even if it's, that wouldn't be, if it's personnel matters, it's pretty specific when you can do that.
Right, but they're not county employees.
That would be a stretch.
Yeah, no, so, sorry, not executive session, but is that, I guess, I'll say, is that going to be livestreamed? Since we're talking, usually when we're talking, like when we did the interviews for Timberland Library, that's when this whole conversation came up. We were doing interviews and they were just being livestreamed. And it just created just a level of, you know, just for the people that were here interviewing. So the board had discussed whenever we were discussing kind of like boards and things like that, that we would not livestream it, but not sure.
You could choose as a board to not livestream that conversation. But at this time, all, our normal process is to livestream all meetings of the board with the exception of the planning sessions. That's the only one that we're not livestreaming at this stage.
I guess I, I'll make a request to the board to not livestream that meeting. I think I would like to have just a broad conversation with DV and.
It's still an open meeting, but we would not livestream it, just to be perfectly clear with the board.
What about questions or like speaking with, you know, I'm, I'm reading some of these resignation letters and one of them says, I do have feedback I can share with the Board of County Commissioners and council. But, you know, they're saying that their, their letter, they, you know, want to send around expressing gratitude. But there is feedback that they potentially would like to provide. How do we?
DV, DV will provide some feedback to you during the work session. And if the board would like to follow up with members, we will arrange that.
So start with DV and then if we want
That is my recommendation.
With those who have resigned, we can arrange that afterwards.
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess I'll ask with my request again, is the board, is the board okay with not livestreaming that meeting?
And that's only one item on that briefing period. So maybe it could be potentially livestreamed and then a break and then that up again, depending on the scheduling.
Or we could arrange it so that it's either at the beginning or the end. So it wouldn't be quite so.
I'll channel Commissioner Edwards for a minute, you know, and, but we're like, what's, what's, what's the reason? You know, if like, if we've got a practice of this type of meeting is always livestreamed and all of a sudden we're turning the light switch off for a moment and turning it back on, that, you know, is it the right time to have that conversation? Is that the right thing to do?
So I will say there are certain challenges that this committee has been experiencing. DV will inform the board about, it could be considered of a sensitive nature. And in order to not impair the work of the members who remain or the pool of potential candidates to fill the open seats, you may want to not broadcast this meeting. That if, I'm trying to, you know, catch this in a sensitive way.
Yeah, I, I guess, I don't know. I'm a little like hesitant and uncomfortable with the light switch on, have the conversation, light switch back off.
So I will, I will say regarding livestreaming of the board's meetings, I absolutely agree that the county should be transparent as possible at all times. However, I will also say that this county's commitment to livestreaming and making meetings recorded and available goes above and beyond any requirements in the Open Public Meetings Act and actually is way ahead of the vast majority of other jurisdictions.
I, I agree, but we've, and we've established a practice and an expectation. I'm just trying to like, like, I don't, maybe DV's here, but like I, sorry.
We've had like situations like this before where we've taken things, especially when we're talking
A sensitive nature.
About specific, like, just matters within the council. Again, I just feel it, it just shouldn't, it's just, if we're going to get into kind of the core issues of it, I really would not want it to be kind of on the internet forever, right? I think that this is conversations that the board needs to have with DV that are, that is frank. And and there are going to be some things that do come up that I, you know, again, it's, do not want that to be kind of reflected on the racial equity council or the work that's been done so far. So we've done this in the past before when we've talked about specific advisory boards and not to put kind of like any advisory board on blast, we've not livestreamed it. And I guess I'm just asking that, kind of that practice that was, has been done in the past be held for, for this one as well. that was, has been done in the past be held for, for this one as well.
Commissioner Edwards, you have a hand up?
Yes, sir. I I just feel that whenever we're in doubt, you know, here we are discussing should we or shouldn't we, then we should always consult our council about that to make sure we get it right. Jane is pretty good on, you know, keeping us in line, so just.
Thank you.
I assure you that as long as it's an open meeting, we are not required to livestream.
Commissioner Klaus?
I was wondering maybe if we could hear Devi's thoughts on this, since she would be the one reporting and is familiar with the needs and wants of the council probably closer than we are. And then if Devi doesn't know for sure, maybe she could go back to the council and maybe even the previous members and just see what their comfort level is. Maybe that's going too far into it, but I just feel like, I appreciate Commissioners Mejia, Commissioner Mejia's suggestion to not livestream it because of the personal nature of the discussion. And also, maybe the people who are part of the discussion or the topic of conversation might have input about like, maybe they want to be livestream, want this to be livestreamed so that people are aware of what's happening, or maybe they're not comfortable with that. But I think if we're making a decision based off of respect for a group of people, then we should at least ask that group of people how they feel. But maybe Devi can speak to that better.
Hi.
Hi, Devi.
Hi, if if I can jump in, I am fine if it's livestreamed, I'm fine if it's not. I mean, obviously, it's entirely up to you all. I think that the feedback that I've received so far, I think should be shared. It can be shared publicly and openly. A lot of it, I think the commissioners are aware of the issues, but I would say there's nothing in particular that I would be talking about related to individual people. It would just be collectively the issues that have been happening and the challenges that I'm facing and that the council's facing. But I understand the desire to want it to be not recorded, so, you know, I, the conversation will remain the same either way. I won't be talking about individuals. I'm not treating it as a personnel issue. I will just be treating it as the, the general challenges that the council as a unit has been facing, along with the feedback that I've heard so far about why these individuals have resigned without speaking to them specifically, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Don't know how we'll be able to do that, but if it's livestreamed, it will be recorded. They go hand in hand.
My request remains the same.
Okay. Well.
So we can bring this up again at the time of the work session.
Okay.
So that gives you all a little time to think about it. We can fill in Commissioner Minzer, and you can decide before the work, at the beginning of the work session.
I I guess I don't know enough. Commissioner Edwards? Your hand is up.
I guess I'd just suggest whatever we do, there ought to be counsel available to us at the time we do it.
Bring an attorney into the conversation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Is it possible to flip the racial equity one with budget to make it at the beginning of the meeting that way?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Can do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That will conclude Advisory Boards and Commissions. Next item, item 4, PIO check-in.
Good morning, Commissioners, Megan Porter, Communications Manager. I have no updates this morning.
Okay. And then item 5, Commissioners' items. Are there any Commissioner items? Come on, Commissioner Edwards, you got something for us.
I'm letting you off the hook this morning.
Commissioner Klaus?
No updates.
Commissioner Mejia?
I'll wait on my items.
Okay, I have no Commissioner items, and that it?
I think that's it for this morning. We have at 10:30, we'll start the planning session. I understand Commissioner Minzer is out today. So Rob and I will arrange to bring him up to speed on what he misses, but these topics need to go forward.
And under the closed session, there were some other items of the sheriff's office. The sheriff does have a time constraint, so I'm wondering if it's possible to, to move those items prior to the first in line, so because he has to depart by 10:40.
Sure, we can flip that.
Okay. All right. Well, that, that concludes the agenda-setting meeting. We will adjourn until 10:30.